The executive session.
Subtle.
Thank you, Mr. Bossett. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
Read your certification. Mr. Parsons, please.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I'm moved to certify that to the best of our knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion to go into executive session or heard discussed and considered executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Mr. Zacoija?
Yes.
Mr. Bossett?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
And Miss Garrett? Okay, we'll stand for the pledge. Mr. Zacoija, if you'd like to lead this thing back, please.
Let the legends do the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Dr. Hooker, do you have your delegations off the agenda? Would anybody like to address the board at this time?
Well, let's bow our hearts toward it, ma'am. All in God, we thank you for the opportunity again, Lord, to be out tonight to the county school's business, and we thank you for all those gathered here tonight, the ones who are being honored. We thank you for their talents and their service, and just ask that you give the board the wisdom to direct the school system the way they should have them to do so, and forgive us for where we fell you, and help us to keep our focus on you. Christ's full name. Amen.
Anyone else? Like to address the board?
I'd like to ask the board what your policies is on what happened down in Castlewood back on November fourteenth. My name's Eddie Dodson. I've got a thirteen-year-old daughter who attends Castlewood High School. She was called in the office. She was asked a lot of questions about a certain issue. I don't know what's public or what's not yet. Three men in a closed room asked my daughter questions about a sexual allegation against a male teacher. I want the policies changed. Whatever you need to do, you need to do something. Just don't have it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have our superintendent to address this.
Please do.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate all of you for the job you do. Policies, protocol, whatever procedures, we don't leave the subject to thirteen-year-old kids at this council.
I thank you for your presentation. Anyone else? Please, Dr. Hooker, that matter, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Well, I'd like, no, I need to make a motion tonight on that, that we call the parents, or if we let them know, or if we need to talk more about it, or what?
I would like to talk more about it.
Okay. Because I want that to happen.
Parents definitely need to be notified in something of that magnitude, one hundred percent. Policies need to be in place to do that.
I agree.
Do you have any adjustments to the agenda tonight, Captain?
Come in. It's on there.
Okay. Any motion? We finalize the agenda?
Subtle.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have a motion that we approve the minutes?
Subtle.
No, good for me. Thank you, Mr. Ball. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zacoija. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The recognition for tonight, Dr. Hooker.
Okay, I'd like to ask Ms. Georgia McCoy to come up and help with our recognition tonight. Thank you, Dr. Hooker, Madam Chair, members of the Russell County School Board. Our first recognitions will be the Castlewood High School golf team. They placed fourth in the VHSL Class One State Tournament, and those team members are Maddox Barnett, if you'll come forward along with your parents, Jeanne and Heather Barnett, Abby Bradley, Cassie and Wendell Davidson, Peyton King, John and Tracy King, Jacob Lasley, Bobby and Teresa Lasley, Bree Phillips, Garrett Phillips, Connor Robinett, Matthew and Abby Robinett, Stephen Somerville, Jacob and Cindy Somerville, and Bailey Varney, David and Rebecca Varney. I would like Mr. Sparks to come forward along with the coaches, J.D. Lawson and Bob Rainey. I would like to give the floor to Mr. Sparks and the coaches, if they're here, to give a few words.
I'll just, I'll be quick so Mr. Rainey can speak. He gets to spend a lot more time than I do on the golf course. But I'll say this about this particular group and this particular team. They've brought so much good, positive recognition to Castlewood High School, and we could not be more proud of you all and your efforts. It's been fun going and watching. I've learned a lot about golf. I'm not a golfer personally, but I have enjoyed going and spending time with these folks on the golf course, and they're just, they're just good people. They're just good people, and they've just, they've just been a joy. But.
I don't have much to say other than how proud I am of these kids. The thing is, on the team started together when they were six years old, and they, as a team, made it to the Virginia High School League, reached one D, or one Class One championship three years in a row. It sounds like kids that played it four years while they were there, were a four-time college district champs and tournament champs, and three-time region D champions, so.
Three consecutive.
Three consecutive, yeah. They did a really good job, and I'm mighty proud of what they did.
Thank you. We have plaques that we'd like to present to the team and its states, presented to, and I'll do Maddox first. Maddox Barnett, from the Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning the 2022 VHSL Group One A Boys Cross Country, oops.
Three kids, four kids also ring cross country.
In recognition of winning the 2022 VHSL One A Golf Team, fourth place. Abby Bradley. Peyton King. Jacob Lasley. Bree Phillips. Connor Robinett. Stephen Somerville. And Bailey Varney. We also have a plaque for the school and the coaches. And it has all the coaches' names and the team members. Thank you. And if you'll step outside, the lead in the news would like to take a picture of the group, and please shake the hands of the school board before you leave.
Can you get the birdies to come back in before they take the pictures?
Sure.
Okay, our next recognition, our Air Boys Cross Country Team from Castlewood High School, placed fifth place, VHSL Class One A State Team. Maddox Barnett, Jeanne and Heather Barnett parents, Jake Bush, Brandon and Kara Bush, Adam Gibson, Bob and Jim Gibson, Peyton King, John and Tracy King, Keith Kaiser, Jamie and Heather Kaiser, Jacob Lasley, Bobby and Teresa Lasley, Coach Connie Crabtree, and of course, the principal of Castlewood High School, Jared Sparks, if you'll come forward. Connie and Maddox, I'm gonna give you that other one. Mr. Sparks, is Mr. Crabtree here today?
She's not.
Okay, then I'll let you start.
Um, these guys, what these guys do, I, Lord, I don't even know where to begin. I look out my window every afternoon when they're practicing, and all I see is them running around the campus, up the hills, down the roads, over at the football field, and I, I get tired watching them. I'll be honest, I get tired watching them. And what makes it even more impressive about them is, is they're, they're doing this while they're playing all these other sports, obviously, as you see them come back in here. So not only are they doing cross-country during fall, they're playing golf, some football, different things like that, and they're, these guys, you could look here, and I wish, I wish I had report cards in front of them to show you. And, I mean, they're truly student athletes, and they're just, they're great pillars of our community, and we're just super proud of having part of our family. We're just super proud of them.
Thank you. We also have team certificates, and this one goes to Maddox Barnett. VHSL Group One A Boys Cross Country Team, fifth place. Jake Bush. Adam Gibson.
Think I'm pacing.
Adam also placed fourth place as an individual, which is quite an accomplishment. Let's give him a hand for that. Peyton King. Keith Kaiser. And Jacob Lasley. Also have plaques for the coach and the school. Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Great job, Castlewood High School. Please shake the hands of the support members that each other have a picture back here outside. All right, our next recognition is Teacher of the Month, and tonight must be the night for Castlewood High School. The Teacher of the Month is Emily Hines. She is the agriculture teacher, so I'd like to ask her and her family to come forward. This is presented to Emily Hines. Castlewood High School has been named Teacher of the Month. I'd like to read her recognition letter. It's written by Polly, of course, and it says, "Please ask Mowgli the goat about the most outstanding teacher in this county. Well, to be perfectly honest, actually, in this entire world, and his answer would be quick and certain, Miss Emily Hines. Miss Hines' students would be quick to agree. She has revitalized the agricultural department and the Future Farmers of America Club at Castlewood High School. She provides challenging and fair opportunities to both gain and display knowledge. She's enthusiastic and passionate about education, agriculture, animals, plants, Castlewood High School, and most of all, inspiring her students to excel. But if you ask Mowgli, and of course, if he could talk, he would tell you that he had a tummy ache a few days ago. None only did Miss Hines fetch him the exact medicine that he needed. She also came back at eleven thirty that night just to sit with him and keep him company until they could find both peaceful rest." So congratulations, Miss Hines.
All right, Mr. Sparks, would you like to say a few words?
I don't really know what to say other than to add to that. That is, that pretty much sums it up. Even though I guilty, guilty mistake her for a student from time to time, well, as always, Emily has revitalized our ag program, and our numbers, I can tell you, we bust them to eleven in high school today, sixty-seven of them from where we were at pushing. We were pushing twenty just a few years ago, to sixty-seven of them today, and I had to solely put on the shoulders of Emily Hines, and we are just, we are privileged to have her at Castlewood High School. Thank you.
The board and go outside, please, for a picture for the lead in the news.
All right, and our Employee of the Month goes to Ms. Cassandra Mullins, also of Castlewood High School. Is she and her family here today? Please come forward. I'd like to read the nomination letter written by Polly. When it comes to special education, especially self-contained, it's a job few are called to do. This job requires a person to have patience when helping their students become independent, compassion when their students are having meltdowns or come in need of extra attention, and self-motivation in wanting to work with their student by coming into work with a positive attitude. This job also requires a person to be attentive to personal needs, such as hygiene, a task that isn't for the weak of heart. Cassandra fits all these criterias. She has a special ability to make every one student and coworker still welcome and have a positive attitude. She is a one-in-a-lifetime employee, and I feel she deserves the recognition of Employee of the Month. This is presented to Cassandra Mullins, has been named Support Staff Employee of the Month.
Mr. Sparks, would you like to say a few words?
Again, that pretty much sums it all up, and this has been Cassandra's first year with us, but I will say she's positivity, and that's what I see. Like, as soon as I see her every day, no matter what, she's always got a smile on her face, she's always super positive, and, and what she does, if anyone knows, what she does on a day-to-day basis in our special needs classroom is truly a blessing, and she's truly a gift to those students and their families, and we, we are super, super happy to have her at Castlewood High School.
At this time, I'd like to bring up Antonio Rice from Jobs for Virginia graduates.
Thank you for that gentleman right there. You guys can try to see me. Every year around this time, I show up. I do have, I think I want to pass out to you. And now I pass these things out. I understand the territory that I'm in, Hokey Bills. I know there's some Tennessee folks, but I will tell you, I always have something to say about you Hokeys. Yeah, that's right. See, so, but I tell you, I think you all know about the terrible tragedy that happened at the University of Virginia. You Hokeys are awesome. Now, this is not being recorded, is it? No, so, and, you know, you can be rivals in your sports clubs and all that good stuff, in your sports team, on the athletic field, but when something like that happens, and then your biggest rival steps up the way that the Hokeys did, Virginia Tech did, it's incredible. Of course, it plays to my, you know, I played football at the University of Virginia. I graduated from the University of Virginia. It's near and dear to my heart, and of course, through the four years, the one game we needed to win was the Hokeys. And so, the fact that when something happens like that, and the Hokeys really step up, and so your rival, your rival, rival can be your, your best friend. And so, just a quick note, because I always have something bad to say about the Hokeys wanting to come up here, not this time, just all praises. So speaking of praises, here we go again. I've been, let's see, Barry Glenn, I've been three years, so it's been three years since, and then Barry Glenn was, I guess, Russell County Career and Technical Center has been, and part of the JBG family for a very long time. But since you all have been a part of our family, you've always won our five of five award. And let me just tell you what that sounds like again. So Russell County Career and Technical Center has been recognized by our national affiliate, Jobs for Americas graduates, for exceeding all five of the JAG standards for the follow-up class of 2021. And Russell County Career and Technical Center was recognized at our Jobs for Americas graduates National Training Seminar. So let me make a big deal of this, because it is a big deal. Despite COVID-19 academic and socioeconomic barriers, Russell County Career and Technical Center exceeded all five of JAG standards. Additionally, Russell County Career and Technical Center outperformed the JBG state average in all five categories. Congratulations. And so if you look at the graduation rate, one hundred percent, and then JBG rate is ninety-six percent, and then the JAG standard is ninety percent, employment rate is seventy-seven percent, JBG is seventy-two, JAG standard is sixty, positive outcome ninety percent, eighty-seven percent for JBG and seventy-five for JAG, one hundred percent on full-time employment rate, eighty-four for JBG, sixty percent for JAG, and then ninety-three percent for further education rate, seventy-four for JBG and thirty-five for JAG. And along with your package, there's some just additional information about the Jobs for Americas and all that good stuff, to know more about what our program is all about. And so, we have a saying in the football realm, "Big eye in the sky don't lie," meaning that you're getting filmed, you're gonna do something on the football field, don't lie, there it is. Stats don't lie either, and stats don't come easy, I can just tell you. And so, that's why you have your CTE director, and you have your, our specialist, Paula Banner, champions. I was in Washington, I woke up in Washington, D.C. this morning, so I'm a little raspy and, okay, I don't have my vest attire on, and so, as I'm coming, driving down, the seven-plus-hour trip, it was more so, this is an opportunity to acknowledge your program that is actually, that's been the flagship of, of my organization. Now, I get evaluated too, so I do, some of these stats kind of reflect, I use these, you know, I use these stats as well, but I think it's important now, especially nowadays, it's, I think it's important to be able to acknowledge folks who are doing a good job. And it's not, not a phone call, not a letter, show up and say, "Great job, great job." And so, and it's about our kids, right? And so, it's, when it comes to kids, I have a nineteen-year-old and a seventeen-year-old, and so, that knowledge piece, it's important, and it's important to have the banners and to have the, the awards, and to say, "Hey, job well done," and "Good pats on the back," things like that. It's important to kids, for sure. So, this is, I'm embarrassed to say, this was, no, this is, this is the right one, because, no, because there was another one that we, that we got, you guys, so, because the COVID year we missed, so this is the right one. Look at that. It finally got off those ships that was out there in the Pacific. So, on behalf of Jobs for Virginia graduates and JAG, I just wanted to acknowledge your wonderful, wonderful program that you have at the Russell County Career and Technical Center. I'm sure you all have been over there. If you haven't, go on over there. It's absolutely fantastic. And I will tell you this, our CTEs, our, our technical, Career and Technical Centers within our network outperform a lot of our other, other programs, and then this one here is just, it's just amazing. So, job well done. Congratulations, and thank you for your time. You're very welcome. Go Hokeys, I say.
Okay, we're down to approval of the bills. Thank you, Mr. Bossett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Hooker, takes us to our retirements or resignations.
Madam Chair, we have one tonight to be approved.
Okay, do we have a motion that we approve this resignation?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zacoija. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Dr. Hooker, our new personnel and transfers, do you have any?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, we have two tonight.
Okay. Do we have a motion that we approve the new hire?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, takes us to the action items for this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have three action items tonight. The first one is, the staff would like to request the approval of the renewal of contract for attorneys.
Do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Parsons, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett, and that is continued services for the Kenton firm, and we appreciate the excellent job that they have done for us and our continued services.
Yeah, thank you all so much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
If there is, be quiet. Okay. Okay, Dr. Hooker.
The second item, Madam Chair, is the approval of the action for employee A.
Okay. Do I have A?
to be safe what time we're off. Thanks.
I'd also like to tell them to send money to their peers.
And we'd like to thank Toner High School for the.
Yes. Last meeting I mentioned, checking into the, if there's a fight, if you just retaliate or catch yourself, I mean, it's a kind of check. And it is already in our policy.
Yes.
It's just, the principal just needs to investigate. Like, if you are deemed to be self-employed, you should get less or no suspension.
Yes.
But no VHSL is not that way.
Appreciate this music given to this, his kids. It's always nice to look in the audience and have you all with us.
Thank you all for what you say. But it's the guys in that department that, yeah, and you said that.
I said, I thank everybody.
The thinking.
Handwork.
You get them going.
As I say, I want to, work for me that every, every job needs a boss. Every, every department needs a boss. So, I guess that's true everywhere, okay?
I'd like to say, last meeting when we was, when we voted for Steve Banner on the field, the reason I voted no was I was just took a shot because I thought we were just going to discuss it more. I have nothing against Steve. I loved him as a principal. And he did, you know, he's done a great job as, as a coach. And I was just, I was just a little far. I thought we were just going to talk about.
Okay. Do we have a motion that we adjourn?
I do.
Next year, next year, June 23rd. All in favor?
I'm not sure I'm there.